Mr. Mayor, you're live.
Hello, everybody. We're having our first remote council meeting. As some of you may already know, the way this works because of the limitations of the technology, you will see me quite often. You'll see me looking away because I'll be reading the details of the agenda from a separate screen. I have to look away to do that and even further away when I get to the first question in order to read that question. Okay. So the meeting is in session. I thank everybody for tuning in and I guess we'll start with the first question period. We ask that people who have a question email it in by 4:00 PM this afternoon. And one question was received. The question came from Morton Grossdorn, and I will read the exact question before I answer it. If I read fast enough, the preamble will be less than a minute. So the question is, "Further to some discussions at earlier council meetings, a request for access to document request was submitted and accepted by Maitre Tap on February..." Sorry, screen just went dead. Okay. "On February 5th, 2020, at the March meeting, Maitre Tap advised the resident that much or most of the information was already prepared, but due to a staff shortage, there may be a delay. He also indicated that due to confidentiality issues..." He provided examples unrelated to this request. "...some information may be withheld. The resident did not receive any further communication and the prescribed deadlines were not respected. On March 7th, 2020, the resident filed a formal complaint with permission of access to information." Now, the question, Mr. Grossdorn's question is, "What gives Maitre Tap the right to violate the law by not responding in the prescribed time permitted and further jeopardize the town's good name by necessitating a formal complaint being filed?" Okay, so now I'll respond to that. Maitre Tap is responsible for access to information requests. He is the sole person responsible. He's very, very knowledgeable in the law and having been a lawyer for, I don't know, 40 or more years, much of it in the municipal field. And he knows, and I know, that ideally we should respond within 30 days to a request. But when a request is very long and requires many, many, many documents, it can take quite some time to put everything together. And the law permits delays beyond the 30 days. Now, since this matter has now been, according to Mr. Grossdorn, taken to the municipal commission, is now a matter on which I should not comment. I will simply say that I know Maitre Tap will vigorously contest the claims and is also simultaneously working on collecting and putting together the information. In due course, the information will be released and that may or may not be before the municipal commission holds its hearings. I don't know. At any rate, the town will address the issue in the proper forum. Okay, that's it for that. We move on to adoption of the agenda. I believe Councillor Goldwax, and you'll be able to hear the councillors, you just won't be able to see them, but I believe Councillor Goldwax would like to amend the agenda. So, Councillor Goldwax?
Yes, I'd like to add item 11.8. It's a resolution to hire a Mr. Maxime Bork in our administrative areas in purchasing.
And I believe you have item 6.2, Mr. Goldwax?
Actually, well, okay, yeah, 6.2.
I don't have... I don't have 6...
No, 6.2 is...
Yes, Jack.
6.2 is we want to add the item that the town of Hampstead agrees to pay an amount of $25,000 split in $20,000 to the Jewish General Hospital and $5,000 to St. Justin's to buy, to purchase personal protective equipment to help frontline healthcare workers deal with and protect themselves from the COVID-19.
Okay, to do this properly, we have to deal with each of these additions separately. The first addition, having to do with item 11.8, is being proposed by Councillor Goldwax. Would someone like to second that amendment?
I'll second it. Harvey Schaefer.
Okay, so we now, that's been proposed and seconded. We now have to deal with the other amendment, the proposal by Jack Etteri. Would someone else like to second Councillor Etteri's item?
I will second it as I said before.
Okay, so Councillor Alfassi is seconding that one. Now, we need to have a vote on 11.8. Is there anyone... Okay, anyone opposed?
No, you need a vote on the new agenda as...
No, on each item, I'm sorry, on each item, the mayor is correct.
Okay.
So if we're dealing with 8.8 first, are there any councillors opposed to adopting item 11.8?
No.
No, okay. So that's added to the agenda. Now, on the 6.2, the proposal to spend $25,000...
Not to donate, not to spend, to donate.
To donate $25,000 to the hospitals, as mentioned. That has been proposed by Councillor Etteri, seconded by Councillor Alfassi. Is there anyone opposed to adding that to the agenda?
No.
Okay, so both now, I would ask, would someone please move adoption of the agenda as amended with these two additional items?
Michael.
I'll second it. Harvey Schaefer.
Councillor Goldwax proposes, Councillor Schaefer seconds. And is anyone opposed? Very well. The agenda is adopted and we're at the departmental monthly reports. I'll call on Councillor Wigginsburg to give us the community services report.
So first of all, the CSR buildings was closed March 13th, and though people are still working from home, the building is closed for the time being. They are going ahead with hiring other tennis and pool people for the camp and camp people. Only if they need interviews will they do it online. Having said that, all CSR recreational activity has been either canceled or postponed for the time being. There is nothing right now happening and it's just a sit and wait. We have no idea when it will come back into being. So we're just hoping that this pandemic eases up over the next little while. So that's basically my department update. There really isn't much to update. I just want to say a few things, if you don't mind, Mayor Steinberg. First of all, I just want to say thank you to not just all the CSR staff, but all of the Hampstead staff, whether you're in Public Works, the Public Security, or Blues, or whatever. They are outstanding. They're doing everything possible to try to keep Hampstead and our residents and the town moving forward and people protected. I know how hard everyone's working and it really is so appreciative for every single person and how difficult it is for everybody. I also want to say thank you to our Hampstead residents who are taking this seriously and doing everything they can to help mitigate this horrible time in our lives. I think it's really important, everybody, I sit down and watch people go down by and they're keeping away from other people, and I think it's so important. I want to take a special thank you to Thierry and Richard, who are really working so hard in trying to put all this together and keep us moving forward and keep us healthy. Thierry is so patient with people like me who have no idea about things that they're doing and he helps so much. I also would like to thank my co-councillors and the mayor because I see the heart and the caring that everybody is trying to help our residents and our town. And really hope everybody out there understands how truly hard the people of Hampstead and the councillors and the mayor are working to keep us safe and keep us going forward. And I'm honored to be standing here, sitting here and working with these incredible gentlemen and the people. And I just want to say thank you to everyone in Hampstead and on the council for taking this horrible time and really making it the best it can be. And I wish everybody safe and healthy futures. So that's my report.
Thank you very much for those very nice words. We come to finance, Councillor Etteri.
For a finance point of view, so we've done an analysis to see how COVID will impact our finances, and we don't see very much of an impact except and save for the transfer taxes. We've budgeted, I believe, about 1.3 million, and it's anybody's guess what we're actually going to see there. So I would think that at least half of that we're not going to see. So we're going to be off by about 650,000 at least, or 700,000 for our transfer taxes. CSR, if we don't do anything, it's a wash because the money that goes out for CSR also comes in through revenue for CSR, so that's pretty much a wash. The year-end audit was postponed, so the auditors have been sent the files to review offsites, and they'll be doing that. We did a change to the credit for the water tax. So if somebody has an over-usage, like a huge overuse because of a leak, and they fix that leak, then we're fixing, we're giving a credit back as a function of the usage as opposed to before, we did it based on the marginal cost, which made it much more expensive. So now it'll be based on twice the maximum usage of the previous year as opposed to the marginal cost, which made it far more expensive. We're going into this difficult time with a very good financial situation. We've got about $6 million surplus. We've got 1.04 million in park funds, so we're pretty solid. The provincial government has ordained or passed a resolution or a law saying that the sale for non-payment of homes for non-payment of taxes is going to be on hold for the entire province until after the health emergency has been lifted. So that won't be an issue. City of Montreal has postponed the, our aglo tax that we have to pay to them by one month, which allows us in return to postpone the second installment of the property taxes by one month. So instead of May 12th, it will go to the following month, June 12th. And, yeah, so that's pretty much it. We're in a solid position. We don't expect to have major disruption from a financial point of view. All of our staff are currently staying on. We didn't lay anybody off. And the payroll is working as usual, even though people are working from home. So that's pretty much where we're at, and Godspeed to everybody.
Thank you very much. That brings us to urban planning, Councillor Buttoning.
You missed me, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Goldwax.
Oh, sorry. It's hard, I'm on the council table, Councillor Goldwax, Public Works.
So just a couple of things to talk about before we talk about Public Works. One of my other portfolios is Seniors.
Michael, you're dropping.
Which is incorporating... Oh, do you hear me?
I don't hear you, Mike.
We hear you.
Now we do.
Okay. So, not sure what you heard. So as most of you know, I do...
I don't hear you.
You don't hear me?
Now I do.
You're dropping.
Your network is causing poor quality. Oh, switching to a better network. I'm on Wi-Fi, believe it or not. Bear with me one second.
Maybe we should go on to Warren and come back.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay, Councillor Buttoning, urban planning, and then we'll come back to Councillor Goldwax.
Yeah, thank you. I'll keep it relatively short. We have year-to-date done 40, we've had 47 permits requested year-to-date. Obviously, because of this COVID situation, we've done this month 40 inspections, whereas last year we've done 136 inspections. So as things started to slow down throughout the month of March, obviously, our teams started working remotely, and that means that we had to stop doing inspections to a certain extent.
All right, just continue. I just want to go on. Yeah, go on.
From, with regards to the pool, as Councillor Wigginsburg mentioned, we are conditionally hiring lifeguards for the summer. We've hired our managers, so the staff applications and interviews, I should say, are still ongoing. So that is being taken care of. With regards to information technology, naturally, Thierry has been extremely busy with a focus on this COVID situation. As most of our employees are now working remotely, a lot of effort was spent in terms of setting up the teleworking situation, which included setting up Microsoft Teams, migrating everything to the cloud so they could work remotely and ensuring that everybody had the resources. There was also a lot of work in tandem with the communications department in terms of informing the public and updating them on what's going on. We once again encourage our residents to follow us on all the social media channels through our website and through their My Hampstead accounts. There's now over 1,000, almost 1,500 accounts. So there's information being posted as quickly and as necessary throughout our different channels and platforms. And I guess the other interesting thing is with regards to the overlapping communications, information technology and urban planning, we did hold our first planning and advisory committee meeting through virtual methods on Microsoft Teams, which went extremely well. So thank you once again to everybody for their efforts and wishing everybody safe passage as these times go on.
Thank you very much.
I am back on. I'm not sure if you can hear me. I turned off my camera for whatever reason. Seems to me I have an issue with Bell now all of a sudden. So I will just go quickly back. For most of you know, one of my portfolios is Seniors. I do, I am in constant contact with the local CS, discussing numbers and reviewing the current cases in Hampstead. No specifics and no details, but just the overall numbers themselves and where the spreading is coming from, which is community spread, by the way. Just as some members understand, Hampstead, March 29th, eight days ago, was sitting with 18 cases confirmed, and we are now at 27. So that is a 25% increase or 30%, almost 30% increase for that. Coates and Luke has gone from 107 to 207 in the same timeframe. So we do know we are in the early stages of this. I akin this to pregnancy, and I say we're in our first trimester of the pregnancy of this for Montreal and for the western part of Montreal. But I'm urging everyone to heed the warnings. Do not get together with people. Do not invite people over. Do not go over to in-laws or grandparents or anybody out. And please practice social distancing. It is crucial. Whatever we're going to be doing is going to save our loved ones and our elderly later on. I'm begging everybody. That's from, and just as a shout out to the staff, frontline staff, and the behind-the-scenes staff of every Hampstead resident who works in the hospitals, whether it's St. Justin's or in the Jewish or any other facility that is dealing with the COVID-19, my hat's off to them for their hard work. So thank you very much. Turning to Public Works, there's, as you know, the COVID-19 has taken over a lot of operations or stopped a lot of operations, and we're resulting, so we've had to actually split our team so that we can also mitigate any transmission between the blue collar workers. Pond holes are being filled around the town in the mild weather we're coming up, and we've had no instances of water main breaks or snow removal to deal with, thankfully. And there's ongoing planning for the spring 2020. And the Green Team, which was expected to be recalled the 1st of May, will be put on hold until we have more information on the COVID-19 progression and the limitations imposed by the Ministry and the Health, Santy Quebec, Santy Montreal, and the Premier Lego. And those are my reports, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Goldwax. Councillor Schaefer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, fellow councillors. As I've stated in the past, I am responsible for two portfolios, one of which is Public Security and the other has to do with legal. I'll first deal with the report of the town clerk. I want to thank Maitre Tap for his report, which is usually very well done, and I want to also thank him for his hard work in all areas where he's now called upon in this troubled period. So the report of Maitre Tap is as follows. It should be noted, this report covers the period between February 15th, 2020, and March 15th, 2020. During this period, we had one assembly of the municipal council, the RCM, then on March 2nd. The town clerk's office, in addition to being responsible for the drafting of the bylaws, also assists the various directors to ensure that our bylaws are enforced and must from time to time bring the matter to the attention of the courts. We have worked closely with the new head of urban planning to fine-tune a modification to our nuisance bylaws as well as the bylaws which will be studied during the next year. We have spent time examining certain files requiring an appreciation of their complexity. We have received very few complaints this year relating to the snow removal by municipal employees and no new court file, which is very good news. As always, the town clerk is in assistance for the legal support to the different directions of the municipality and to members of the council. We have listened to the development relative to the development of the coronavirus situation. We are in contact with the clerks of other cities, and we share important logistics information. I would like to mention that the town of Hampstead is one of the first cities to act on the subject and allow its employees to work remotely to ensure their safety. I would like to personally thank my general manager, Richard Sun, for his wise decisions in times of crisis. And Mr. Sun, I think on behalf of council, I think we all echo the comments of Maitre Tap. My other portfolio is, at this point in time, a very important portfolio considering we're in this pandemic, is Public Security. I think it's always important to commend a member of our Public Security when they act beyond all call of duty. In this particular instance, Mr. Mayor and fellow councillors, I'd like to commend Miguel Johnson. Miguel Johnson, a former soldier for Canada, happened to notice a young lady walking up the stairs of a home and all of a sudden took possession of a parcel or a box which was at the doorstep of the household. He happened to notice that this person was wearing a jacket which indicated the year of her graduation, the name of the high school to which she belonged. He first brought this to the attention of the owner. The owner wasn't interested in pursuing it, but to show how fantastic are all our public security officers are, and in this particular case, Miguel Johnson, he went on his own and found the yearbook for that particular school, and he was able to identify in that yearbook the person that he saw removing the box. He was able to recognize that person by, she was wearing the exact same earrings the day he saw her remove the box. He then went back to the household where the box was removed, and he got the authorization of the homeowner to, that she should call the police and press charges, which she did. The police now know the identity of this woman, and I'm pretty sure that in due course she'll be arrested. And this is all thanks to the fantastic work of our Public Security. This is only one example of others that I've brought to the attention of the council beforehand, and I think that Miguel Johnson deserves this personal public attention that I'm giving him tonight. The Public Security Report was prepared by Mike Fitzgerald, who's in charge at this present time, and his report indicates that there was 133 calls to Public Security from February 16th to March 18th. In terms of statistics, there was 201 parking violations and two other miscellaneous tickets for a total of 203. The department, as Mr. Fitzgerald says, or Chief of Operations states, "The department continues to work in close operation with Public Works concerning snow offs and other situations. Department was present in many activities at various religious institutions for Purim, et cetera. All were attended without incident. Department is presently looking for a replacement for the auxiliary officer who left our service this past month." For operational, the surveillance of the synagogues on Saturday mornings is going well, and many positive comments from the citizens. There were extra patrols put on the Purim celebration. Due to the hate mail being sent to one of our synagogues, patrol presence was stepped up to reassure the population. With the arrival of the coronavirus situation, the department is adjusting our procedures and the officers are meeting the new challenge as well. The team is ready to serve the residents as best we can. The word is to be prepared and remain flexible. And I'd like to echo, talking about Public Security, I'd like to echo the comments of some of my fellow councillors. We should follow the three rules. Number one, distancing, two meters apart, wash your hands regularly and often, and do not congregate. I know that we're reaching, this coming week is Easter Friday, Easter Sunday, I should say, and we have the Passover Seder, and I urge you all to adhere to what many of the councillors, the mayor, and many other people have said. Do not invite people to your home for Passover Seder. I know it's strange to say that, but this got to be done because we've got to ensure that we come out of this pandemic with the best possible results. So I wish you all a happy Easter and a happy Passover, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you very much, Councillor Schaefer. I do want to also extend my best wishes for a happy Easter, happy Passover, and I also echo what's been said so many times before about following all the rules. I want to add just one thing that I have mentioned in one of my messages, but I want to echo it again because it's particularly important at this time. We are, by consensus, approaching the peak of the pandemic here in Quebec. Exactly when that will come, or even if it's already passed, I don't know, but we are certainly approaching the peak at the very least. And what people need to understand, for your own well-being, the peak is the place where you have the most risk of catching this. Not at the beginning, not at the end, but right now. Right now, in the middle, is where you personally have the greatest chance of coming down with the COVID-19 virus. So for your own sake, as well as the sake of your loved ones, as well as for the community, please do everything that you're being asked to do. Stay home. Go for a walk with someone else that lives in your house, no problem. Stay two meters away from anyone else that you pass. Been taking lots of walks, and I see that people are doing what they're supposed to. People are crossing into the middle of the road that rarely has any cars, moving out of the way. It's happening all the time this afternoon, and every other time I've gone for walks with my wife, this is what we see. So you're doing a great job. We don't have a huge number so far in Hampstead, 27 cases. I hope it remains that way, and it will. I hope it remains that way, and it will, and nobody can catch this if they stay home. It's really that simple. You can catch it if you stay home, and one other thing, if you have stuff delivered. Bring it in, remove the packaging, wash your hands, and then you can deal with the contents of the packaging. So, that's uh, my little uh, uh, medical safety uh, advice. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, I just want to take this opportunity as well to thank uh, first Richard Sun. And the entire, for their tremendous work that they do, especially in those days. And the entire team, which means uh, Public Works, Public Security, CSR, purchasing anyone under his uh, his, his hat. And at the same time, I wish the entire community happy Easter and happy Passover, although it's gonna be. Uh, between us, within the immediate family, but I'm sure it'll be a beautiful holiday. And with God's help, soon we will return slowly to normal. Happy Passover to everyone.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, uh, moving on, we get to resolution five point oh, adoption of the minutes on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Uh, it is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of March second, twenty twenty, are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. Brings us to.
Six point.
Six point one, which is an important resolution. Uh, it's resolution mandating the administration of the town of Hampstead to pay under protest. The quote par invoices and contribution to the agglomeration of Montreal. So, on motion of councillor.
Etary.
Uh, councillor Etary, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Uh, it is resolved that a mandate be given to the town of Hampstead's administration to pay under protest. The quote par invoices and contributions to the agglomeration of Montreal. That a copy of this resolution be sent to the mayors of the, of the related cities. Uh, anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. Uh, the details behind this are rather complicated, but to make it simple. We've gotten legal advice, uh, as have other towns, that there are certain things. That uh, the agglomeration has been doing, which are illegal and result in uh Hampstead and other towns. Paying more than they should be, but I can't get into the exact details only because it's too complicated. Uh, but by paying under protest, we're reserving our rights to perhaps get a refund when all is said and done. Okay, moving on, six point two, this was proposed by uh councillor Etary. It was a last-minute addition, very literally, uh, so I will let councillor Etary uh, read his resolution.
So, it uh, it is resolved that the town of Hampstead sets aside twenty-five thousand dollars. To purchase and donate personal protective equipment for frontline healthcare workers. Dealing with COVID nineteen. The breakdown shall be twenty thousand dollars of equipment to Jewish General Hospital. And five thousand dollars to Saint Justine. And as way of explanation, is not part of the, the, not part of the resolution, but as way of explanation. The Jewish General Hospital and Saint Justine are the two frontline places that are dealing with uh, and treating. The vast majority of Hampstead patients or future Hampstead patients.
Okay, would someone like to second that?
I second.
Okay, councillor O'Fassi is seconding it. Uh, and uh, so I'll ask. Uh, is anybody want to have any discussion? This is a very last-minute thing. Or does anyone oppose uh, this resolution?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to clear something, uh, are we uh, donate the, the thing, or we are going to buy the thing? Uh, what I, I understand is that we're going to give the money to the hospital, right?
Yeah, we're, we're going to buy and donate the goods.
We are buying, we're doing the, the, the buying ourselves?
Yeah, we're gonna buy like, everything changed. We're gonna buy like N ninety-fives, or we're gonna buy the uh, face shields. Depending on what it is that uh, they most need at the time, and we're gonna donate those things.
Okay, so it's not simply giving the money that they uh, they will organize themselves to uh, to buy it by themselves?
No, it's to purchase, Pierre. It's to purchase.
Okay.
The item, and then donate the, the items purchased.
Okay.
Now, the only thing is, Jack, you didn't specify what we're gonna, what i- items we're gonna provide the Saint Justine. I know the, the, the Jewish needs face shields, but do you know what the Saint Justine needs?
No, we will, we will coordinate with them. We've already coordinated, I've already spoken to the, the Jewish, so I know what they need. Um, I don't know what Saint Justine.
So, you'll, you'll verify what they need and we'll, and then utilize that way. Very good.
Okay.
Very good, very good.
Okay, yeah, anybody else have any comments? Very well, that's adopted, moving right along. Uh, we're at seven point one. Which is adoption of bylaw number seven nine five dash eight, modifying bylaw number seven nine five concerning nuisance. Um, on motion of councillor.
Michael.
I'm sorry?
I said Schaefer.
Schaefer and Goldwax.
Schaefer, uh, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It's resolved to adopt bylaw number seven nine five. Dash eight, modifying bylaw number seven nine five regarding nuisance. Anyone opposed? It's adopted. That brings us to seven point two, it's a notice of motion. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax, okay.
Wiganburg was first.
That's okay.
It was just a notice of motion, so councillor Goldwax, I think I heard.
No, it was Wiganburg, Wiganburg.
Wiganburg, okay, councillor Wiganburg. At a subsequent meeting of council, draft bylaw number seven six one dash six. Modifying bylaw number seven six one will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number seven six one dash six. And a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Brings us to seven point three. Adoption of draft bylaw number seven six one dash six, uh, on motion of councillor.
Wiganburg.
Wiganburg, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved to adopt draft bylaw number seven six one dash six, modifying bylaw number seven six one regarding dogs.
Could I just make, could I just make a quick comment just for people to understand?
Sure.
This is bylaws that had to be changed, that were mandated by the Quebec government. So we're just updating our bylaws to follow what the Quebec government has told us to do.
Yes, and I'll just add to that, uh, our bylaw, at least in my opinion, dates back to twenty ten, it's proved excellent. All the most important aspects of our bylaw are not being changed. But there are additional things that the Quebec government legislates, uh, legislation requires us to do. And so we've modified our bylaw to incorporate those provisions. Anyone opposed? No, okay, so that's adopted. Brings us to. Brings us to.
Seven point four.
Yes, seven point four, another notice of motion, um. Having to do with tax rates. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
But Etary.
Etary. That, at a subsequent meeting of council, draft bylaw number ten twenty-four dash one, modifying bylaw ten twenty-four, will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number ten twenty-four dash one, and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Which brings us to seven point five, which is adoption of the bylaw I just mentioned, on motion of councillor.
Etary.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
I heard Schaefer.
I heard Schaefer first. Okay, uh, it is resolved to adopt draft bylaw number ten twenty-four, bylaw decree. And opposing the tax rates to cover the town's expenses for the year twenty twenty. Anyone opposed? Okay, and I'll just mention that uh, this is the bylaw that is allowing us to. Change the due date for the second installment of property taxes uh, to June twelfth. For those who have already sent in checks earlier and which have not already been cashed, they will not be cashed until June twelfth.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, it's to, we may change all installment, all, not only the second one, but all other installment, the way the, the bylaw is written.
There are only two installments.
Hey?
There are only two installments.
Yeah, but what I mean is not, it's something that will be applicable in the future to.
Uh, well.
Well, no, in the future, it'll only be applicable if um, there is a state of emergency. If it's a state of emergency, then we have the right to.
That's right.
That, that, that the director general has the right in consultation with the mayor and council to change the due date. But that's only the state of emergency.
Right.
Correct. Uh, okay, um, I will announce. Each member of council having received copies, the town clerk deposits minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on March sixteen, twenty twenty. The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk, which brings us to. Which brings us to eight point two. Yes, eight point two, dealing with fifty-seven hundred Queen Mary Road. Um, it's a minor exemption because we cannot have uh, a live council meeting. We can't ask for interested parties to comment, uh, but.
We received no comments, Mr. Mayor, from any party about this uh, minor derogation.
Okay.
Was the, was the uh, uh, important or the serious prejudice alleged?
Yeah. I check with Mario, yes.
Okay, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, it is resolved that the minor exemption to the zoning bylaw for a detached single-family dwelling located at fifty-seven hundred Queen Mary Road is approved. The request only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. Brings us to eight point three, which is dealing with the same property. Now, it has to do with the proposal. Uh, and we're changing this a little bit. Um, we're going to conditionally approve it. So, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the addition to a detached single-family dwelling located at fifty-seven hundred Queen Mary Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, is conditionally approved. Uh, provided that uh, one of the uh, three roofing options that were submitted today. Um, uh, is uh, is acceptable to our planning department after consultation with the P A C members. Um, and also conditional uh, on the um, uh, a couple of facade items. Uh, that were also modified today, also being acceptable. Um, the project only partially meets the prescribed standards, it's only bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Did I ask if anyone was opposed? Not a mask email. Okay, no one opposed. That's adopted, conditional approval. Um, and that brings us to. Eight point four, which concerns twenty-seven Colchester Road. Um, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Goldwax.
Okay, councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the modification of facade for a detached single-family dwelling located at twenty-seven Colchester Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, is approved. As recommended by the P A C, the project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? Adopted. Uh, brings us to. Eight point five, which is thirty-two Duffin Road. On motion of councillor.
Budning.
Uh, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer. Okay, uh, motion of councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Schaefer. It's resolved that the modification to a facade of a semi-detached single-family dwelling located at thirty-two Duffin Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, are approved as recommended by the P A C. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And the prescribed, the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? It's adopted, and that brings us to point six. Eight point six is seventy-six Hampstead Road. On motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the modifications to the facades of a detached single-family dwelling located at seventy-six Hampstead Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, are approved. As recommended by the P A C, the project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? No, it's adopted. I should mention, by the way, that all these uh, planning meetings that were holding, the P A C meetings. They're all being done with Microsoft Teams remotely, and as you can see, there's quite a few items that we're covering. All from home. Okay, eight point seven, sixteen Linkcroft Road. Uh, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Goldwax.
Okay, motion of councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved. That the addition to the rear of a detached single-family dwelling located sixteen Linkcroft Road. And submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, is approved. As recommended by the P A C, the project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. And the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? No, adopted, that brings us to eight point eight. Eight point eight, uh, eleven Heath Road. On motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved.
There were no intervention, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but we can't have minor intervention.
No, but I, I put on the public notice, a notice of, of the people that they, they want to say anything, that they can write down something to me, but I received nothing on the subject.
Okay, so there were no interventions.
Yeah.
Um, so, on motion of councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved, the minor exemptions, the zoning bylaw for a detached single-family dwelling located at eleven Heath Road. Is refused. The request only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number one thousand one dash two. Anyone opposed? No, so that's adopted, and the citation is not being accepted. That brings us to eight point nine, eleven Heath Road again. On motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It's resolved. That the addition to a detached single-family dwelling located at eleven Heath Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March sixteen, twenty twenty, is deferred. As recommended by the P A C. Project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number. One thousand one dash two and meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program, bylaw number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted, and that brings us to. I'm guessing eight point ten. I'm guessing eight point ten. Uh, eight point ten concerns 205 Finchley Road, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, it is resolved that the modification to the front porch for a detached, single-family dwelling located 205 Finchley Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March 16, 2020 is approved as recommended by the P A C. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. So that's adopted, which brings us to eight, oops, eight point eleven, concerning 213 Finchley Road, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Goldwax.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax, it's resolved that the modification to a front facade of a semi-detached, single-family dwelling located 213 Finchley Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March 16, 2020 are conditionally approved as recommended by the P A C, provided that a stronger metal siding, subject to U P B I, approval is required. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to 30 Duffren, which is uh.
Eight twelve.
Yeah, eight point twelve, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Goldwax.
Councillor Budning, seconded by councillor Goldwax, it's resolved that the modification to permit number 2019-0379, in addition to prevent windows on the left lateral facade of a semi-detached, single-family dwelling located 30 Duffren Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March 16, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the P A C, provided that the modification to the left lateral facade is acceptable and provided that the new windows and masonry must match the front facade architecture of the house. The project meets the prescribed standards of zoning by law number 1001-2 and partially meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. Which brings us to oops. Brings us to eight point thirteen, 69 Glenmore Road, on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Seconded by councillor. Goldwax. That, the modification to permit number 2019-0100, in addition to add a chimney on the rear facade of a detached, single-family dwelling located 69 Glenmore Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March 16, 2020 is refused as recommended by the P A C. The project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and partially meets the prescribed standards regarding the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. And that brings us to nine point one, approval of disbursements for the month of March. Uh, on motion of councillor.
Etterite.
Etterite, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. Uh, it is resolved that disbursements for the period from February 16, 2020 to March 15, 2020 in a total amount of $6,997,546.86 are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Which brings us to
Nine point two.
Yes. Seven point, no.
No, nine, nine point two.
Nine point two.
What happened to seven point three?
We're in the nines.
Yes, but seven point three comes right in, Jack, after nine point one, on the list, on the iPad.
Yeah. Bill, it's just written wrong on your iPad number, but it's nine point two.
Perfect.
It should be nine point two?
Yeah. Deposit of town treasurer's report.
That's right.
Okay, so nine point two, deposit of the treasurer's, uh, oh yeah, right, okay. Deposit of the treasurer's report for the town council on 2019 election activities, each member of council having received a copy. Town clerk deposits treasurer's report for town council on 2019 election activities, according to section 485 of an act respecting elections and referendums in municipalities, council takes note of the positive fed report by the town clerk. Okay, anyone, uh, let's just, an announcement, brings us to ten point one.
Also to note, it was a pretty simple one because so many people were acclaimed this time around.
Yes. And it is strange that the government took this long to approve this whole thing, but anyway. Uh, it's done, we have a contract for the opening maintenance and closing of sprinkler systems, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Seconded by councillor Schaefer, it's resolved that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is more empty delineated here under, goes to Mr. Alain Martinel. And it's for the opening maintenance and closing of sprinkler systems for 2020 and 2021. And, uh, the opening is 7,000, it is a maintenance, three and a half thousand, closing 5,000. Repairs, one man. Uh, approximately 100 hours should come to 4,500 repairs, requiring two men, approximately 80 hours, 7,200, traveling fee approximately 1,800, pieces of materials approximately 6,000. Uh, both the G S T and Q S T are not included in the, in the above prices. That quantities of hours and traveling fees listed above are approximate quantities to be worked out, to be worked and done during the two-year contract, based on average hours worked and traveling fees paid in past years, only actual traveling fees and hours worked will be paid to the supplier. And according to the frequency amount of work done over the past years, the estimated expenditure for the two-year contract is assessed at 37, 35,000 before taxes, according to tender documents, rates will be adjusted as per C P I for the section of the contract. The tre, uh, treasurer's certificate number 20-09 dated March 17, 2020 has been issued by the treasurer attesting to the availability of funds to cover the described expenses. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. Ten point, oops, ten point 11 point one. Um, approval of the hiring list of white college student employees for the community services and recreation department, on motion of councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Seconded by councillor. Uh, seconded by.
Michael. Goldwax.
Okay, councillor Goldwax, it is resolved that the town council approves the hiring of white college student employees as detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the lifting of the health emergency decree given by the provincial government and to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P logo 429 and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed?
I would like to comment here, and my comment will be, I look here, as I do every year, there is about 20 students being hired.
I can't hear you, Leon.
Somebody's talking in the background there.
Yes, I know, I don't know who. Okay, go ahead.
So, my comment is, there are 20 students or young kids who are being hired now, and in the past two years to see at least 50% of them Hampstead resident. And right now, all I see is three out of the 20 are Hampstead resident and the rest are from Cozenbrook, Montreal, Westmount, et cetera. So that's one number comment, I wonder what happened there. Uh, and I know for a fact that there was one kid, I don't know if he's on the list, that was reaching out to be hired, Hampstead kid, and I passed the name along, and I don't know what happened there. So that's one comment, and the other comment is, not knowing where we're going with the Corona situation, are we committing to hire all those students for the summer?
All summer hires, all summer hires are subject to reopening.
Okay, and I have a comment as well. My comment is that, is there a reason why almost everyone we hired has no previous experience? I see down the list, some of years employed at Hampstead, there's one person, uh, for tennis, uh, this Andrew Greenspoon is the only one that seems to have had previous employment in Hampstead.
Okay, so let, let me address all these comments, if you don't mind. Uh, first of all, our criteria, first of all, we give a certain preference to Hampstead residents. Uh, I believe that every single Hampstead resident who applies gets an interview. That is not true for other people who apply, they may have may not get an interview based on other criteria, but Hampstead residents always get an interview. Number two, you can't just look at, uh, the people who are hired and assume that, uh, that we're biased, let's say, against Hampstead residents, of course, there's no reason why we would be, we're not. However, uh, we don't control how many Hampstead residents apply, nor do we control the quality. We always hire the highest quality people. I'm sure everyone would agree that the last thing we want is to have a person who is less qualified as a lifeguard, and heaven forbid, somebody should drown. No, we have to hire best quality people, same applies for the day camp. You don't want councillors who aren't absolutely top quality. Uh, and that's why our number one criteria is quality. We have a very good team that does a variety of interviews, and after people are hired, there's a whole bunch of training, training that goes on throughout the course of the season. So, uh, I'm really very pleased with the staff we have at the pool, have had at the pool, and same with for the day camp. All these hirings have proven in the past to be excellent hirings. Um, the other question was, why don't we see more people with many years of experience? And that's because there's summer jobs. Uh, most people, especially the good ones, move on. They go to other jobs that are close, more closely related to their fields. There aren't a lot of people who, uh, want to make a lifetime career out of being a day camp councillor or a, or a pool lifeguard. So, it's natural that we're going to have a fair amount of turnover, and we do. But preference again, to ones who already had experience. Okay.
Can I just add one more thing?
Michael.
Hello?
Yeah. I'd just like to add one thing, because we're talking about returning employees. I just want to say that last month at the council meeting, we approved 40 seasonal summer employees that were returning.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
Among them, one, two, three, four, five, uh, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, I'm sorry, 12, 13, uh, there's 14 returning that are Hampstead residents.
Out of, out of 40.
That's right.
And today, you're hiring three out of 20. So, you see the tendence, and Bill, the tendence is every year, in the last five, six years, we used to be 80% Hampstead resident, down to 50% last year or two years ago, and we're going now either further down. The question is, do we promote those positions in our newsletter? Do we hand it to our residents first? Do we give them the chance to be aware that we're looking for summer jobs? So that is where I think we're, I haven't seen anywhere, neither in our website nor on our newsletter, where we promote those summer jobs. That will be the first thing to do.
Actually, we do promote them in the most recent newsletter and in past newsletters. Uh, well, the most recent one has the annual guide, and the annual guide has a whole page or whatever.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what you should do, I'm sorry, you should do, you should have one, one flyer separate in there, because this is, goes directly to Hampstead resident. So make it obvious and make it clear, because the flyer, when you put it in the, in the booklet, and it's a one line in the booklet, we're looking for summer employees, it's not as if you have one piece of flyer within the newsletter, and it's all devoted for that item.
Well. We can always second guess, but I can point out that the information we provide only goes to Hampstead residents. Uh, if we, uh, we have other, uh, ways of communicating things on our website, Facebook, which anybody can look at, but our Hampstead newsletter goes only to Hampstead residents, and it is there in the annual guide, which people keep all year. And I can't tell you, I don't remember whether there was a particular flyer in the earlier newsletter, and I don't remember every single detail. But Hampstead residents do have more opportunities to find out about this than non-Hampstead residents, and as councillor Budning pointed out, uh, we have in fact hired quite a few Hampstead residents, even if they're not on this particular list, they were on last month's list, uh, which is also an indication that the first people being hired are the Hampstead residents. And, uh, the way it works, now this is an unusual season, we don't even know if we'll have a day camp or a pool opening or anything, it all depends on what happens with the COVID-19 situation.
Right, right. Bill.
In a normal situation.
Councillor Budning, Budning just said that 14 out of 44 or 46 were Hampstead, and now today we're talking about three. All I'm saying is, why don't we look for the future to have one flyer separated, in, inserted into the newsletter, and that will be the way, the right way to really expose, furthermore, in our web, in our website, why not? And, and for, in other places, in, in Facebook, those are the vehicles we have to make Hampstead resident aware that we're looking for jobs. I know for a fact, two Hampstead resident called me for the jobs, and I directed them to Irene and Laura. So I think we should look into that and have just a fly, a, a one pamphlet or flyer within the newsletter, it's nothing wrong with that.
Leon, do you know if these two people actually applied? You referred them, but did they apply?
They did, for sure, they were waiting for an interview, and they're not, but I will find out, it's no big deal.
I think maybe you should verify, because the mayor said that all Hampstead residents are interviewed.
Right, right, I'm not arguing that, all I'm saying is, expose it better to Hampstead residents.
I understand, I agree with you, I'm saying maybe they never proceeded with the application.
Oh, come on, they followed up with me, Leon, I'm, we're still waiting to get the call.
Find out if they had an interview.
Find out.
Councillors, we have to move on, we have to move on, but councillor Fassi, your point is noted about having a flyer. Uh, the website and the Facebook, of course, those are read by everybody, not just Hampstead residents. The flyer, uh, or the newsletter only goes to Hampstead residents, so it's one more advantage Hampstead residents do have. Anyway, duly noted, uh, we'll move on, uh, did anyone, did I ask if anyone's opposed to this? Okay, so I assume no one's opposed, we'll move on to the next resolution, 11.2, approval of the hiring list of blue collar student employees for the community services and recreation department, on motion of councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, seconded by councillor Goldwax, it's resolved that the town council approves the hiring of blue collar student employees as detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the lifting of the health emergency decree given by the provincial government and to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P logo 301 and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. And there's only one employee anyway. Uh, 11 point, 11.3, um, approval of the hiring list of blue collar auxiliary employees for the public works department, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer, it's resolved that the town council approves the hiring of blue collar auxiliary employees as detailed on the list from as detailed on the list from the public works department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, adopted. Brings us to eleven point four. Approval of the hiring of Mr. Yosef Abenheim as permanent laborer driver on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It's resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Yosef Abenheim as permanent laborer driver, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, adopted. Brings us to eleven point five. Another hiring on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It's resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Michael Giza as a permanent caretaker driver, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Adopted. And brings us to eleven point six. Uh, another hiring resolution on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Goldwax and Schaefer again. It is resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Jonathan LeBlanc as a permanent operator driver, subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, adopted. And that's eleven point seven. Approval of the hiring of Mr. Olivier Roth as permanent pipe fitter on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
It is resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Olivier Roth as a permanent pipe fitter, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. You'll have to give me a minute because I have to go find that other resolution. Uh, let's see, here it is. Okay, eleven point eight. Uh, another, one last hiring resolution on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
It's resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Maxime Bork as a permanent supplying technician starting today, April sixth, twenty twenty, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between Q P local four two nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And now would someone like to move a German?
Edery.
The Goldwax Schaefer duo, okay. Uh, anyone opposed? No. So the meeting is adjourned. I thank all residents who tuned in to, I guess, watch me and listen to the council. Uh, we're going to try, uh, given the uh, the Quebec government restrictions, it's extremely likely that our May meeting will also be done remotely. Um, and we're going to see if we can um make it even more interactive. Uh, I'm not promising anything, but uh, our technical whiz, Terry Who, will uh, see what he can do about that. So thank you, everybody, and good night. All right.